Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's May 20th, 2025, City Council meeting. We would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. I also want to make mention that Councilmember Wall is absent and excused from tonight's meeting. At this time, we'll ask Councilmember Duana Bigelow for tonight's invocation.
Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Let each one of us, that we, let each one of us, so that we can make fruitful contributions at this time, strengthen our spirits and cast out fear, enabling us to overcome challenges and make a difference. You promise to open doors of blessing and provide for your people. We ask that you work mightily in us today, help us to be mindful of those in need, and to extend kindness and compassion in all that we do. May our acts of service create a ripple effect, transforming our community with love and abundant grace. We offer this prayer with gratitude and by faith. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is a presentation to City Council, the 2025 Commemorative Carousel Festival Plate that is presented by Hand Ceramics. At this time, I'd like to recognize John Vernon. Good evening, John.
Hello, Mayor Council. Thanks for having me up here today. I've wanted, since the carousel came back fully restored to City Park in 2022, Hand Pottery has presented a commemorative plate in honor of each Carousel Festival. I've got Michael Lattell up here, who works with existing businesses in our economic development department, and he's going to share a little bit about what the growth has had in the past several years and what it, how lucky we are to have him here in Burlington.
Absolutely.
Good evening. How are you, Mayor?
Yep.
I wanted to share with you a little bit about Hand Pottery. Hand Pottery has been located in Alamance County since 2012 and have eventually moved into Burlington and have become a very integral part of the Maple Avenue corridor in terms of making some improvements to buildings that were old mills and pieces that we definitely needed some changes to. However, they've also done a good bit of work in our economy, and they supply a lot of high-end pottery to restaurants and/or hotels and those sorts of things, so they have been beneficial to that. And when we actually got to COVID, it kind of changed their business model. Obviously, we couldn't get out, we couldn't go in, we couldn't do those sorts of things, so therefore, they started working more towards export. And in the last three years, they've done a really good job of growing that. They export now to over 17 countries, and they received the Governor's Award this year for new entry into export. So they've made a difference for the state of North Carolina, which monitors over 582 businesses that export, and they were recognized as one of the new entries into that category. So they're a good partner for us, they're a good business in this community, and we're glad to see them actually being able to do something like this back for us. So just wanted to give you a little background and history on who they are, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but other than that, turn it over, John.
Yep.
I'd like to invite Mark Warren up here and to present the plate this year.
Welcome. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. We just want to say thank you very much. We love being a part of Burlington, and the Carousel Festival is always a highlight of our year for my two kids, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you mind doing a picture of the hand over?
Yeah. Thank you for that. We're very appreciative, and thank you for your contribution to the city. Next, we have several proclamations and recognitions this evening. First is the Military Pine Historic Preservation Award. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson. Where's Jamie? There she is. Lost you for a minute. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I am pleased to always present this annual award, and this year's award nomination goes to 1007 West Davis Street. This is the commonly known as the Chatham House, and it has a lot of history in terms of the, who built the home and who it was built for, going back generations to several of the local cotton mill establishments and, and owners for the area. But you will recognize this property as I bring up pictures of it, because it is very unique in terms of the architecture. It is more of a Mediterranean style, if you will. So I'm going to just share my screen And this was first discussed with the Historic Preservation Commission earlier this month So just in terms of some background, the Military Pine Award was established in the 1990s. It is actually named after a Burlington resident. It recognizes property owners for their efforts who, to preserve the character and the timeliness of the city of Burlington. The Historic Preservation Commission, as I, as I mentioned, recognized 1007 West Davis Street as the, as this year's award recipient. We will also discuss May as the National Historic Preservation Month, but just, this is a snippet from the, the survey that got submitted when the West Davis Historic District was established. Each property within the district had its own description, so this is, this is the description for, for this property. It was built in 1925 by Edwin C. Holt, who is a grandson of Edwin M. Holt and founder of several local cotton mills. It was built for his daughter and son-in-law, W.T. Chatham, who was also involved in the local textile operation. Its elegant design, which might be best described as classical Mediterranean, renders the structure one of the most unusual houses in Burlington. Salient features of the house are its flat roofs, tucko elevation, and two-story core, bracketed by one-story wings with turned balustrades. Tuscan columns support the porch recessed by the wing, wings. We had a lot of pictures that was submitted by, by family members, and the first half of the pictures represent what it looked like when they purchased the property. So even though it's grand in these pictures, what they did in terms of the renovation is just over the top, I would say, but in, in the, in the kindest of words. So like I said, these are, these are existing conditions, and then this is where the, the existing conditions start. So it, it just has really been preserved in a, you know, fantastic manner, and the property owners, who are Robert and Kay Norris, also provided this summary. All of this is included in your packet, so you'll be able to read this at your leisure, but they described the, all of the work that they did, and it's always interesting to see how many pages that is for, for some of these projects. It's pretty, pretty amazing. So at this point, I will call on Chair Pennington of the Historic Preservation Commission, who has a couple of words he'd like to say, and then we'll call up the representative from the family.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Burlington's historic neighborhoods, buildings, and landmarks enhance the quality of life for all of the city's residents. The historic, the City of Burlington's Historic Preservation Commission appreciates the investments by owners of properties to preserve Burlington's historic structures. Our city's designated historic houses, districts, and properties honor the work of the generations who helped to build Burlington, and they contribute to a vibrant city that can attract new residents and businesses. This year's honorees are commended for their comprehensive renovation of one of the city's most distinctive homes, which has been brought up to contemporary building standards and is now in a pristine condition that will ensure that it can welcome new families and residents for generations to come, thanks to the investment of its owners. So the Historic Preservation Commission is pleased to present the 2025 Military Pine Award to Robert and Kay Norris, and I think their son is here to accept the award on their behalf.
Appreciate it.
It is absolutely amazing. We get the opportunity annually to see projects like this, and they never cease to amaze. I don't know how, council, any comments from council, but it's truly phenomenal, what, the amount of work, and I think it just embodies your personality a little bit. So very, very amazing. So thank you. Any comments from council? Okay, dovetailing right into that is recognition of National Preservation Month, which is May 2025. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
I don't have a lot to say on this topic, because tonight I'm happy to introduce Molly Whitlatch. She is the president, preservation Burlington, and she is here to, in front of you regarding the proclamation for National Historic Preservation Month for May.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, Molly.
Thank you for having me, Mayor Butler and City Council, and congratulations to Norris' family. I mean, the house is amazing.
Yep. So I'll read the proclamation. The City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizing Preservation Month, May 2025. Whereas Preservation Burlington is a nonprofit organization created in October 2016 from a concern about the demolition of local historic properties. Through preservation, education, and involvement, Preservation Burlington seeks to protect and celebrate the architectural and historical heritage of Burlington and the surrounding area. By fostering within the community an appreciation of our historic properties, we aim to promote interest in and good stewardship of our local historic treasures. And whereas our historic properties are a part of the fabric of Burlington's unique local culture and create a sense of place, and whereas historic preservation protects city resources and infrastructure, promotes economic development, supports local jobs in the areas of heritage tourism, construction, building materials, landscaping, and architecture, and enhances local property values. And whereas the, the City of Burlington is home to five local historic landmarks, two local historic districts, six residential historic districts listed on the National Register of Historic Places, including Beverly Hills District, East Davis Street District, Glencoe Mill Village District, Lakeside Mill District, South Broad and Fifth Street District, and West Davis, West Front and Fountain Place District, and the Downtown Burlington National Register Historic District. And whereas Preservation Burlington's Historic Property Grant Program has supported over 138,000 in local private investment to preserve and restore Burlington's local historic properties since 2021, and whereas the City of Burlington recognizes Preservation Month 2025, celebrating those individuals and organizations that devote their time, energy, and resources to preserve and in protecting Burlington's treasured historic properties. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Preservation Month in the City of Burlington. Let's give them a round of applause.
And Mayor Butler, I may share a little bit of news.
Would love.
So we started Preservation Burlington nine years ago with a concern specifically about Burlington, but over the past nine years, we found that our support and our outreach has grown across the county. And so we have announced this month that by the end of the year, we're expanding our organization to be Preservation Alamance. So we look forward to continue, continuing to be a resource to the city and to its residents, but also look forward to expanding our impact on the entire county.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the recognition and proclamation for National Public Works Week, which is May 18th through 20, through the 24th, 2025. I'd like to recognize Public Works Director Gary Smith. Good evening, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. National Public Works Week, it takes place each year in May and gives us an opportunity to recognize the role that Public Works plays in our community. Public Works includes solid waste management, equipment services, cemeteries and grounds, maintenance, street maintenance, building services, water resources, and transportation. And just, I'd like to take a moment just to thank the men and women in Public Works for all that they do each day, and we've got some of our Public Works team here. They would come forward. I'd like to recognize some of those.
Absolutely. Yeah, please come forward. It's a bashful crowd. I've known them differently than that.
Shelbugan in operations, Alan Warren in building services, Natalie Hayes in administration, Bob Patterson, water resources, Mike Nunn, transportation.
Well, congratulations. Let's give them a round of applause. Let's read this proclamation. The City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week, May 18th through 24th, 2025. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs, such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends upon these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Burlington, North Carolina. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Let's give them another round of applause. Agency of the Year, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Police Chief Alan Baylaw. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for having me here. As you know, we're concluding our celebration for Law Enforcement Agency of the Year, an award that has only been possible because each one, because of each one of you, and specifically your direct action during difficult times. Because of you, our community has quality officers, like Carlos Gonzalez, professional staff like Jenny Phillips, telecommunications like Betsy Halligan, and what seems like hundreds of volunteers, working every day to keep people safe and give them an opportunity to thrive in our great city. These members of your police department are doing heroic things every day. Navigating 100,000 911 calls a year, safely arresting a man who stabbed another, having a DWI unit with 99 arrests since December, having a group investigating foot nail traffickers who have been poisoning our community and killing people we know and love, having a police department working hand in hand with the community, neighborhoods, businesses, property owners, and residents. So in recognition of their successes, they are your successes. And what we have for you is a celebration of each one of you, and I'd like to present you with an award of recognition as well. Beverly and Haley are going to help me out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
We appreciate that. We're proud, we're all very proud of our police and fire public works. We could go on and on about the value that all city staff brings to the City of Burlington, but having Police Agency of the Year is very special, and we appreciate the work that your team does and your leadership in that, and thank you so much. We appreciate this. Next on the agenda is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None. Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes, March 18th, 2025, City Council meeting, and April 1st, 2025, City Council meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of the minutes. May I make a motion? We approve the minutes. Let's list it. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our minutes are approved. Next on the agenda this evening is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor and Councilors, if I could ask that number three, item three under new business be removed, football sponsorships, we need to really look at an overall policy for the city. We'll get that back to you as quickly as possible, but we would like to ask that that be removed at this time.
Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda with the removal of item three under new business. Is there a motion? So.
Remove, remove has changed.
Okay, the motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Adoption of the agenda is approved. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us Item A, to approve budget amendment 2025-48 for the police department to accept a donation for the students of Alamance Rising or SOAR program. Item B is to adopt a banking resolution and authorize the city clerk and chief financial officer, CFO, to execute the document and approve the CFO as official custodian of the City of Burlington's bank accounts held at Atlantic Union Bank. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. At this time, we'll move to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. A public hearing has been continued to consider the draft 2024 through 2028 amended consolidated plan and the FY 2526 Annual Action Plan. The public hearing was continued from our May 6th, 2025, City Council meeting, and at this time, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson.
I'm going to turn it over to Michael for summarizing.
Okay. Welcome, Michael. How are you?
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me. The last time I was up here, I think I said that I didn't think we were going to get the home funding, but I was wrong, so it's going to be wrong.
We're glad you were wrong for a change.
Exactly. Let me see if I can do this. Oh, that goes fast. All right, so just to give you a little background for people who don't know, again, the New Home Consortium is Rockyhand, Caswell, Alamance, Randolph, Davidson, Yawkes. It's a fairly large geography. It's, we basically also have Seresexia in Davie around the other side, so we almost got the entire region covered. So basically, when we found out that we did not get the funding for 2024 funding, we still went through the process of creating the consolidated plan, the new consolidated plan, and then the amendment, that consolidated plan, to add the home program to the CPBG by this point. So we did that entire process just on the off chance that it gets funded. So, and then we were informed on November 24th that we were not getting the 2024 funding. At that point, I was like, we're not getting anything, but we went up forward anyway, just in case. And the first program here would be 2526. So basically, worked with HUD and some technical assistance to get the home program. So basically, worked with HUD and some technical assistance to get the home program entered into IDIS, which is the federal system that your staff uses here and we use in other places too, and they finally got that taken care of. That took a while. And then, so that allows the actual amendment to the plan. In February 2025, we reached out to all of the member jurisdictions, the counties, the board members from the new consortium board, just in case we need them, and they appointed those board members, and then they basically approved, they approved consortium bylaws because we did meet on April 10th and went through electing officers and approving potential 2526 home activities. So basically, we had estimates that we used all through this period for both, because HUD had not announced CDVG or home until last week. So the initial HUD estimate for the home consortium that we received from HUD maybe three weeks ago was 1.68 million, and the official May 15th letter was 1.67, so that was about $2,000,000 less. CDVG for 2024, we used the estimate of 458,000. The May 15th letter said 481,000, so they increased that by 22,852. So when we did the executive summary, we used that 1.68 for the estimate because that was what we were given by HUD originally for the letter given. So that was 10% admin, home and rehab program for about $700,000, and that could be in conjunction with ESFRs or whatever position throughout the region, also within the city limits here, with helping with CDVG for rehabs that may need more money. And then affordable rental housing RFP for newer rehabilitation of existing rental properties for about $820,000. CDVG, again, we use, here's the 41 now, we've got that in there, admin 96,000, 15%, no more than 15% for public services, rehabilitation, almost $200,000. So again, we know that people, a lot of people have housing that is, you know, they don't have the funds. It's very expensive to replace a roof like the historic preservation on a house like that. I know what it costs to do these smaller houses. It's unreal what it costs, but I think they probably did with that other house. Relocation systems for 5,000, infrastructure for 100, and that's actually public services and infrastructure. Another activity, technical assistance for 10, for total 42,040. Program income about 25, that's a estimate of 25,000. Admin, basically, it's just admin and planning for the program. It requires a lot of work with budget, finance, grant agreements, everything else that goes along the program. Residential rehab. Basically, building up to about $40,000, you can break most houses up to code, and that's really what the purpose of the program is, is to make them livable, to replace things like roof, heat and air, electrical, you know, health and safety improvements for the most part. And then relocation, when we have somebody that, that workers being done in the house, they can't be in the house, there is a possibility for relocation, which is that money before you get them out of the house, so contractors can do the work without having to have any money. And then for public services, we've got 72,000, that's generally the group that we've been funding for the last four or five years. You know, I think generally that spends money quickly, which is good. They're able to serve people a lot faster at some of the longer range projects, take more time, so we're happy to do that. And then the infrastructure projects, like Green Center, Ralph Scott Life Services, I think Army, that would be physical improvements to those facilities. And then other activity is technical assistance and capacity building. It's the land trust, which we are trying to support the CDVG to get going, to start building up their capacity to create a land trust, hopefully someday like Durham has or some other state that has. Then the consolidated plan, other repair programs, I guess, urgent repair, which the city gets, weatherization systems, which the TRC does at all these counties, then the housing finance agencies, the ESFR, the city's essential program, rehab programs, the TRC does for all these counties as well. So again, we amended the 24 through 28 plan, which we asked once, and again, we continued the public comment, so that will, I guess, you'll go through the process of additional comments, close that, and then we would ask for the amended plan of 2526. Do you have any questions?
So ultimately, the net effect of both grants was positive 20,000. So, yeah. So, good news.
It was good news. I, you know, I think the continuing resolution that was passed in March was out well, so I can't, if you have any idea, I'll tell you anything that's gonna happen after this.
Agreed. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Blair? If not, this is a public hearing, and it has been continued from May 6th, so the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to provide any public comments on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to present any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
Make a motion to close the public comment period.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public comments. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? So our public comments are closed. If there are no other questions for Mr. Blair or for Jamie Lawson, we'll entertain a motion for the requested approval of the item that's before us. Is there a motion from council?
I'll make that motion.
So the motion is to approve the 2024 through 28 consolidated plan amendment and fiscal year 2526 annual action plan. Is that correct? Approved. Yep. And second? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Michael. We appreciate your working with us on this, and thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving to new business this evening, City Council will consider construction bids for the Maynard Aquatics Center and Paramount Theater Go Bond Projects. At this time, we'll recognize City Manager Craig Honeycutt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. This thing, reviewing the status of the Paramount Theater and Maynard Aquatics Center projects and discussing whether we need to accept or reject the bids based on our current budget. Just a little background of how we got here and where we're at now. If you remember, on April 7th, work session, City Council directed staff to move forward with the selling of $11.5 million in our transportation bonds, in our geo-bonds for streets and sidewalks. At that time, we also considered selling the bonds for the MAC as well as Paramount. However, once we received the bids, the bids came in outside of what we had budgeted, and the combined cost for both projects identified exceeded the $17 million that we had set aside, which was $11 million for the Paramount and $6 million for the MAC. And council directed at that time that we would not sell the bids at this time, as they wanted staff to work to try to get the projects lower or to look at other options. Since then, our team has worked closely with our architects and the low bidders to value engineer both projects. I really want to give a special thanks to Fred Patrick. Fred's here. Fred's been our project manager on both projects and just done a fabulous job working with both contractors and working on with staff as well, trying to get us where we needed to be. But again, we did get closer to our budget limits, but we do have options we want to talk to you as well. Let's talk about the Paramount first. With respect to the Paramount Theater, we've been able to work with the designers and contractor to reduce the total construction cost to just over $10.3 million. And to do this, we deferred or removed several elements, which can be valuable, but we can address that at a future time. And those that we're looking at deferring includes performance lighting for the new expansion spaces, replacement of theater seating, installation of a pit platform, and the addition of new acoustical panels. So those are things we felt like we could do without. We've also lowered owner-provided equipment with the plan to phase those in over time in future budgets. And if there's any questions, please stop me at the time. But again, we have kept a lot of the main things that council was looking for with respect to the project. The core features that we wanted that would really enhance the Paramount, but also our downtown as well, we're keeping the lobby expansion, the new second floor, the rooftop event space, the improved backstage and stage right access, the indoor crossover, and enhanced lighting and sound within the theater. These features will really help make us transformative and really bring our theater up to where it needs to be, so we can have a much larger and wider variety of events at the Paramount. Again, the impact, council's impact when we first started this was promoting economic activity for our downtown area and bringing new life to a cornerstone intersection at front in Spring Streets. It's also financially feasible within our bond project. With an $11 million bond, we can move forward with the project as it was bid. Is there any questions that you may have? With the alternates that we've talked about reducing.
The items that we're pulling out through value engineering, those are still items that we could go back and add.
Yes, sir.
If we had additional grant monies or found some monies within the budget to do so.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't, would not, we wouldn't have to go backwards to go forwards. We'd have to tear nothing up to do that.
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay. All right, now we'll talk about the MAC. The aquatic center has proved to be a little bit more challenging than we presented earlier. We have had extensive discussions with the design team and the contractor, and it really became clear that a permanent 75-year-old masonry structure that we originally looked at bidding cannot be built within the $6 million budget that we had set aside from the bonds. Again, several factors included were part of that discussion and why we can't make it work at $6 million, the need for a crane to work over the existing pool, work around protecting the existing pool, the scale of the structure, and the required storm to sanitary sewer conversion due to code. So again, we had a lot of limitations that we could not get around, which really did add to that cost. However, we do feel like that there are viable options that we would like to bring to council and have you consider. We believe that we can construct a year-round, temperature-controlled enclosure that better aligns with the lifespan of the existing pool, a permanent structure that is not masonry. In our preliminary discussions, we believe that we can do it within our $6 million budget. This would ensure continuous use throughout the year and still provide an improved user usage and experience from what we have now. One of the things we want to make sure that we do include is changing the HVAC and our chloramine removal systems, because those are essential, and we are recommended that that's included in any future design, because this will help with the metallurgic issues that we had with the prior structure. So hopefully, that will give us a longer lifespan moving forward with this new structure as well. So now we'll talk about the formal bid process and steps council has to take. Both of these projects were formally bid, and now we're at this stage where council either has to accept or reject either or both bids. Again, for the Paramount Theater, the low bidder is Crispin Company with a base bid of $9.488 million and $834,000 in accepted alternates. For the MAC, the low bidder is Bar Construction with a base bid of $9.617 million. If either of both bids are accepted, we will issue a letter of intent and proceed with executing construction contracts that will occur in our next fiscal year. Bond sale information and a budget amendment for these projects will be upcoming at future meetings if we decide to move forward with one or both, or whatever we decide to do at the time. Kind of to summarize where we're at, we just need first to either accept or reject the bids, and this will give us clarity to staff with respect to moving forward. I do want to thank staff for all the work that they have done to get us to this point. Rachel, Fred, Morgan, Eric, just everybody, Peggy with finance. It really has been a lesson of interesting possibilities, as we have really delved in to try to make these projects work and really do what's in the best interest of our citizens, trying to do the projects the way that we have kind of promoted that during the bottom process as well. So if there's any questions?
So if we move to accept, we take the bids as presented and we move forward. If we move to reject, we reject those bids for, they're done, then we would go back out and look at alternative structures that we could move forward with.
We would have a conversation with Michael Graves, who were our architect
Right.
on the MAC, and ask him to help us look at other alternatives that would be within our budget.
And do these have to be, David, do these have to be voted on independently? Okay.
The thing about the pool that we have to consider, and frankly, I remember Bill on one, Bill and we built this thing 25 or 30 years ago, is that the life expectancy of a pool, especially the pool of this size, is probably the number one in 40, 45 years. So the concept we had originally about putting a permanent structure on it, over it, would certainly, we would think, last longer than literally the pool would, instead of the structure of the pool. Now, I know there's been some investments done in the filtration area, and there's been some other things done to improve the environment. So, you know, I will believe that this change is appropriate in the sense that it will give the community an indoor facility that can be used throughout the year. And also, I would think, with that structure, that would match what we would believe to be the life expectancy of the structure of the pool itself. Because once you put a cover over it, turn that thing out and put it up again, it's gonna be a different ballgame.
Yeah, and once you build a building, you're kind of done, ain't it?
Yeah, you're kind of done. So this makes, I think, the best sense in terms of giving the people an indoor facility that can be utilized during offseason, obviously, and I think it's the best way we probably should invest the public money at this time.
And concerning the Paramount, with the changes that we've made, it is now under the allotted budget that was proposed to the community under bond sale. Or approval. Okay. Any other questions from council on this item? So we'll take these one at a time. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on accepting or denying the...
Mr. Mayor, I've got a motion written out, if that'll help with clarification.
Absolutely. If it makes our job easier, I'm all for it.
Motion to award the, this would be for the Paramount, move to award the bid to low bidder, the Crispin Company, for the Paramount Theater expansion and renovation in the amount of the base bid of $9,488,000 and $834,000 in accepted alternates.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Remove.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, so that item is approved and we will accept that project.
And the next motion would be move to reject the bid from the low bidder, Bar Construction, for the Maynard Aquatics Center enclosure.
Still moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that bid is rejected.
Yes, sir. And what we would also like to ask as well is really, we don't have a cost yet of what a redesign would be for a new MAC facility, we just need a consensus from council that you're asking us to move forward, to start that process with Michael Graves, so we can get that moving as quickly as possible, and we'll bring you back a contract once we have one.
Well, obviously, the goal is to get a cover over the MAC and get it to budget, so I think everybody would be in agreement.
Yeah, within bucket.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's good to be sure the public understands and we should be sure we put information out there because by rejecting this bid, it could be confusing, but we still have full intentions of moving forward and getting that project to budget.
Right.
And I think the last few terms there was an important thing, to try to keep it within budget, what was projected, obviously inflation got us, let's be honest. But this makes sense, like I said, to go back on the aquatics, this makes perfect operational sense long-term. Still building a new facility over a mill-inch pool is not probably the best way to go about, go forward.
Yeah. Well, I'm confident, I know the work that staff's put into this, and Fred's educated me beyond comparison, so, in all the meetings we've sat in on, I think it's important that the public understand how hard staff's worked and council has worked hard to try to figure this out, and we're going to do what we said we're going to do, and we're going to put a cover over it and figure it out and get it enclosed and move forward and keep it under budget.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And Fred's a hidden gem out there, I'm telling you.
Fred's the man.
He's very good at what he does, yes, he does.
Thank you all for listening and coming with good decision making, I appreciate it.
He's very good.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, Craig. All right, next, item three has been removed. Under new business, we'll go to item four. City council will consider a request by the North Carolina Department of Transportation to repeal all current speed limits and adopt a 45 mile per hour speed limit on Anthony Road from NC 49 to NC 62. At this time, we will recognize transportation director Mike Nunn. Liam, Mike?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Very quickly here, I am representing a request from NC DOT. This comes from Don Fearsom, Division Traffic Engineer. Currently, they've discovered through research and also through some developments on Anthony Road that there is no ordinance establishing a 45 or 55 mile per hour speed limit on Anthony Road officially. So what they've asked the city to consider is make sure that they can change that on April 14th. What they've asked for you to do is consider changing that to a 45 mile per hour speed limit from April to 62, 49 to 62, which is shown here. If we do not do that, just so you know, it will revert to 35 mile per hour speed limit. So we would not recommend that, but your consideration tonight would be to approve the request to change that to 45 miles per hour.
So it's very odd to me that this just popped up on somebody's radar, did something happen or...
It was part of a TRC review process.
Okay.
When we were looking at, or they were looking at design standards on Anthony Road to confirm which ones to use, 55 or 45, so it needed to be clarified and authorized.
Okay.
So in their research, they determined that it not high, and it warrants 45 miles per hour.
Gotcha, makes sense. Any questions for Mike on this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adopt a 45 mile per hour speed limit on Anthony Road from 49 to 62. Is there a motion?
A move.
We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mike, I appreciate that. That concludes all of our business items this evening. Moving into public comments, we have no public comments, no, none at all. Council comments, I do have several things I want to bring some attention to. One is for everyone involved, not to forget, we've got a city council work session that's going to be held tomorrow, the 21st at 5:00 PM, that is a date and a change, so let's be sure that we've got everybody participating. Next, Fourth Friday's Concert Series kicks off Friday, May 23rd at 5:30 PM at the Historic Depot downtown, so we're looking forward to that. City administrative offices are closed for the upcoming Memorial Day holiday, that'll be Monday, May 26th. We've talked a lot about historic preservation and Preservation Burlington and things this evening, there's a historic tax credit workshop on June 5th at 6:00 PM, it's being held at Municipal Conference Room, so if anybody's got any questions or needs more information, all they need to do is reach out to the planning department and we'll get you registered for that upcoming event. And then a couple of personnel items, one, I'd like to congratulate Chief Lawrence, who's the recipient of the 2025 ACC Distinguished Alumnus Award. Is Chief still here? That was very special and I was, it was a very cool event. Chief, very proud of you, thank you. And then Bob Patterson, I think, Bob, I think we have, we have a new kid on the block.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our new city engineer who started at the end of April, and she's come back, so I think she's pleased working here. I'd like to introduce Amy Ratliff. Amy comes with several years of experience in the municipal realm with Fayetteville Public Works Commission, City of Durham, and most recently 11 years as city engineer with the City of Oxford, and she also spent several years in private practice running her own civil engineering firm.
Well, welcome.
So I'd like to introduce Amy.
We're glad you're part of our group.
Glad to be here.
Any other council comments this evening?
There I, I have one thing, as you know, I just came from a TAC meeting, there will be, NC DOT is going to be holding a public engagement session next Tuesday, May 27th, and that's about the, I would call it regaining a rail service that we lost. I can't remember the train service number.
Yeah.
But that, that was pretty critical, you know, for people using a train that wanted to be commuters. So those of you who may be interested in getting back the train service that was taken away probably what, a year and a half, two years ago, that would be a good opportunity, quite frankly, to come and have, you know, to give your input and encourage that, the restoration of that service. And again, that's next Tuesday at the Gate, at the City Gate Dream Community Center, that's at 1423 North Church Street, that's going to be between 5:00 and 7:00 PM. And any of those interested in, you know, getting that service back, please attend if you can.
Yeah, this is a big deal because that was a service that was removed and we stayed pretty connected to NC DOT, the rail division, they went through a pilot period, maybe it didn't work out quite the way they thought it would.
I think that was the email they sent us.
Yeah, I think they said they made a mistake. So the process to change anything is public input, and without public input, we won't get it back. So it's important that we have good, strong public input. Bob, would you agree?
Absolutely, and I, is it any way, are we going to do anything, or could we do anything, you know, to alert the public, God, Morgan?
We do talk with the people at NC DOT, they say they're going to put something on their social media that they can share, if they don't tomorrow, I'll make our home and I'll also push it out over, we'll throw it out to our city council and local input groups so people can know about it better, but I've been communicating with them and they say they're going to start pushing out information, but they have not done so yet.
Okay, if you would supplement or do whatever we can, I would appreciate it.
Now, would that impact the other communities that were impacted by this change also?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
They're visiting Kannapolis, they're visiting High Point and Salisbury.
Yeah.
And, and those were all the ones that were impacted, so if we want it, we need to be sure we show up and tell them we want it. We did have several people reach out to us via email that had a vested interest in this. If we've got a way to go back in and find who those folks are and be sure they know directly, I think it would be beneficial because they'd be just as interested in getting some public input as we are. So if staff could maybe work on that a little bit. Any other council comments? And for no other council comments, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So a move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.